The flag of the United States of America. And to the power for which it stands, one nation, and my God, in His will, stability and justice for all.
Mrs. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Wagner? Mrs. Truptow?
Here.
Mr. Basic?
Here.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Here.
Thank you. First order of business and approval of minutes from June of 24th, 2025. PC 062425 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I motion for approval of PC 62425 minutes.
Second.
Second. Vote? Or?
No, we're good. Mrs. Clancy? Yes. Mrs. Truptow?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Yes.
Okay, second item is the approval of the July 22nd, 2025 minutes. PC 0722-25. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I make a motion to approve PC 07-22-25 minutes.
I'll say it.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Truptow?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any old business?
No, sir.
Any new business?
Just a quick training session. So by charter, we are actually required to have at least one meeting per month. So we were about to have an application for a new cell tower on the agenda, but they pulled out the last second. So we're going to be just doing a brief update on training. Just refresher for responsibilities of planning commission. We'll talk about Robert's rules of order and things like that. So we'll happy to take any questions if you guys have them. So refresher, the powers and duties of planning commission are to adopt and recommend to council a comprehensive plan. As I think I've mentioned before, our plan is from 2017. Typically, they're good for 15 to 20 years, but I'll probably be looking to update that plan in 2027. So that'll be coming up. You guys will be heavily involved in that process. You can also review and recommend to council plans and maps for dividing the city or any portion into zones or districts. Then, as you know, we should most commonly get site plans, conditional uses, and variances for recommendation to council as well. There's also another application type of which we don't get too often. This is number six. You can recommend to council that a proposed use has not provide for, and the code is similar to a permitted use as listed in the code. Again, it doesn't come up too often, but if there is a use that's just doesn't, our code does not cover, but it might be somewhat similar to it. Instead of, you know, me making that determination, I can defer to planning commission to make that determination. And then also reviewing amendments to the zoning code text or the zoning map. And then planning commission can also initiate their own amendments to the zoning code. So if you're reviewing the code, seeing issues, you can make a motion to amend that code as well. So, you know, hopefully within the next four months, we'll have a brand new code that we can work with. And then nine, 10, review plans for non-conforming uses as required by the code. And then to adopt rules and bylaws, which we have done in the past year. So going through the most common ones that we see for conditional use, site plan and variance. So conditional uses are land uses permitted under specific conditions within a zoning district. They are subject to review by planning commission and council. Typically, there are uses that carry supplemental regulations with them. Some of them are, you know, they have to provide extra screening. They have to provide extra parking or certain access to the property depending on the use. And there is criteria for these conditional uses that planning commission needs to evaluate and base their decision off of. And that evaluates traffic impact, noise levels, and environmental concerns, for examples. They can, planning commission can recommend conditions of approval on these. Some of them specifically state them in the supplemental standards, like limiting the hours of operation. But other things, you know, you can make a condition of approval to add landscaping along a certain property line. If it's like a commercial use of buying residential, you can require more landscaping, require more parking, anything like that. So the criteria, this is what you get in the staff reports. It says all the criteria from the code and what the decision on a conditional use should be based on is evaluating this criteria. A lot of it is very general, you know. Going through a few of them, they have to be harmonious with the comprehensive plan. They have to have adequate utilities, can affect emergency services negatively, things like that. So it's very general, but this is the criteria that should be used when evaluating conditional uses. And I can come back to this if you have any questions.
Steve, did you want to make a comment as well? So the reason that this is in here is that I asked Zach if we could go over this a little bit. It came up about the Taco Bell. Now, obviously, I'm sure you guys know that council overrode the decision that you guys had on the Taco Bell. But had they not, it was all but told to me that they were, the property owners and Taco Bell were going to sue on that. Now, it is obviously your guys' right to turn something down, council's right to turn something down, and their right to sue. But what I am hoping that we can have happen in the future is that if there is something that's going to get a denial, that we can get reasoning behind that denial on the record from both planning commission and from council. So that when this does, if it does go to court, we at least have an idea of what you guys are trying to, what argument you guys are trying to make. Now, just looking at the record and just looking at comments made during the planning commission, it's pretty easy to see which ones of these you guys were thinking it was falling under for the denial. But it just makes it that much easier for Drew and I, or whoever we hire, to handle that appeal if it were to come up, that we have it on the record, the reasons behind the denial. That way, if it comes to us being in court, we at least have an idea of where we can start our defense at. This not to say that you guys aren't doing a good job. You are doing a great job, but everything can always be improved. And if we just get these things on the record, it helps us down the road if things ever get into court. Now, fortunately for the Taco Bell situation, now, we don't have to worry about the going to court because the council did what they did. However, if it did go to court, we were definitely a little concerned about how we were going to be able to legally justify the denial. With, if council had denied it as well, I would have hoped that they would have put their reasons on the record as well, so we could point to those two. So it's not just you guys, it's not just council. It's just about protecting the integrity of the record that we have here for planning commission. So that's all I have to say on that matter, but I just wanted to make sure that we could have that happen in the future.
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, when applications do get denied, you know, people get upset, especially developers that dump a lot of money into the plans and the due diligence of the property, and then it gets denied. They start looking for legal ways to get around it. So it does come up from time to time wherever an application is denied. We always get rumblings of a lawsuit potentially. So, you know, it's common enough that it keeps coming up. So it's always good to use best practice when reviewing these applications and if you vote no on something. All right, so continue on for site plan review. This is when planning commission reviews the layout, the access, parking, landscaping, even stormwater management, drainage, and lighting for zoning compliance. As part of our site plan review process, engineering always reviews, fire reviews, urban forestry reviews the plans to make sure that it's in compliance with the codes that we have. And you, you know, if there's anything that's outstanding, there will likely be a condition of approval or recommended condition of approval on the application to address further engineering comments or landscaping comments. But the reason we have everyone review is to make sure that we're covering all the bases before it gets to you guys. So it's a complete plan before you're reviewing it. Again, this is another recommendation by planning commission. City council has the final authority. And when considering the impacts on neighboring properties, you know, you can look at the traffic, lighting, landscaping, how the access might affect the property. I know Seven Brew was a topic of consider, topic of conversation for a while about the access. Any easements on the property, you know, those are things that can affect the access, setbacks, things like that. So it's always important to remember to review those when looking at the site plan and for, to think of any questions that come up for staff or the applicant. And like the conditional use, there are criteria for site plan review. Again, they're overall pretty general, some of them the same as conditional use, like has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Can't have a negative impact on surrounding properties, things like that. So there's additional things in here for safe and efficient pedestrian circulation, storm, drainage. But again, they are general enough that's, you know, it's easy to tie in code requirements or your decision making into this criteria. And then moving on to variances. So variance is to allow deviations from zoning standards, typically due to hardships or practical difficulties, you know, something that's preventing them from meeting the code requirement. And planning commission, you guys review anything that's basically non-single-family. BZA or zoning appeals review single-family variances. So with the variance, again, it's understanding the criteria, make sure that the exceptions are justified and that it does not undermine the zoning code objectives. And with that being said, I know that we have an older code, and so, you know, some things have been more lenient. But with the new code update, I think we're addressing a lot of those issues in this code. So if there are future variances under the code update, I think we have a, or you guys have a right to be a lot more strict in the variances that come up. And then like the others, a whole list of criteria for this. Some of them are very similar, but, you know, cannot affect property, neighboring properties negatively. Some of them are like G, whether the property owner's predicament can be obviated through some other method than a variance. So an easy example is like for single-family variances, we get a lot of accessory building variances. Sometimes they can't meet a certain setback requirement because their lot is too elevated for the accessory building in the backyard, so they get put somewhere in the side property line in the setback. So in that case, you know, they cannot obviate, obviate the variance through some other method. Again, you know, just make sure you're considering these things when you are reviewing the variances as well. So Robert's Rules of Order. Want to get in the background of Robert's Rules? Steve's a big fan of Robert's Rules, but. But it's just meant to provide a framework for public meetings to make sure the meetings are democratic and orderly, basically. Make sure that there's fair participation by the applicant, the public, and commission members. Sets rules for making motions on voting, making amendments to the motions, and some guidelines for the role of the chair. So to get in some of those on making a motion, you'll probably notice in the staff reports at the very end, there's always a suggested motion, just I move that we approve application PC 2531. And if there are conditions, you would state as with the following conditions. Number one, additional landscaping shall be installed along, along the west property line. Number two, driveway access shall be modified to align with the engineer's recommendation. So just as simple as that, making it clear, there's two conditions of approval on it. At that point, there'd be a second motion, and then after that, there'd be a discussion between the commission members, if there is any. If not, call for, call for a vote and go from there. Amending a motion, you guys can do that. So during that discussion period, after that second motion is made, if there's more discussion and you guys come up with a different type of motion, you can amend the original motion. But you have to have that on record as having a motion and a second to amend the motion as stated as, as this. And then once it's voted on, that will be the motion going forward, if that makes sense. And then motion to table, you know, this comes up from time to time. It's just used to extend the review of the application if more information is needed. Or if you guys want to see more public input, you can table the application for the future meeting. If you do so, it's best practice to specify exactly why it's being tabled. So the applicant can, you know, if there's more information needed, then the applicant can make sure they give you that information at the next meeting. Indicate when it will be reconsidered, so either say the next meeting or set a specific date for that meeting. And then it's always best practice to avoid indefinite tabling, because we always want to see these things resolved. And planning commission asked to act on an application, I think it's within 60 days of getting it. So any questions on those? Do I add anything?
And as, just with the conditional uses, the more you can put these things on the record, the better. You know, extending, extending out those motions to table by giving the reasoning or whatever else might actually be happening with whatever motion you're doing, just getting it on the record. So if we have to look back at this in court, we can say, okay, here's exactly everything that went down. Here's how we're defending that action, and we believe that the planning commission acted appropriately in making that action because of X, Y, and Z. And if we've got the motion or the record fully built out, that just makes our job so much easier.
Yeah, so explain on that a little bit, when voting no on something. So again, when you make a motion, you want to make a motion to approve something. Even if you want to vote no, make a motion to approve, and then cast your vote as no when it comes up. And then when you do vote no, make sure it's based on the code criteria. So tying the denial to specific code requirements or something in the comprehensive plan goals. If I, if we see an issue with the comprehensive plan, we'll bring it up. We did that recently with Sheets at Stone Fish Creek. You know, there's a focus area in the comprehensive plan and didn't really align with that. So we made sure to bring that up in the plan and the staff report. So your vote would just be I vote no, and you can do that during the discussion. That might be the most appropriate time to explain why you're voting no. So you make a motion, second the motion, and discussion, then you can just bring up why you're voting no. One example can be. Yeah, I mean, you can, you can say, you know, generally, you don't support it because of these reasons, because of this code section, because of this criteria language. I mean, yeah, I don't think there's a problem with doing that before making a motion.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's probably best if you're, if we're getting to the point where you're voting no on something, there's usually going to be, there should be a reason in the code why you're doing that. So whatever makes sense in that particular moment in time to get that reasoning on the record. On council, what you'll see them do a lot is the people that are going to vote no usually will say, I'm voting no, and this is why. Does that mean that they could turn around and vote yes? Sure, I guess it could. But most of the time, when you're at the discussion phase, you already know how you're going to vote. So if we are running into these ones where legal action could be a possibility in the future if this continues down the path, just making sure it's on there at some point is best practice.
Yeah, so if it comes up, I know either before the motion or during that discussion, after you make the second. One example is just saying, I vote, I don't support this because the use does not meet the compatibility standards in section 1143.05 of the code. Or section G of the conditional use criteria or something like that, you know, just making it specific to the code. Avoid any personal opinions, so don't just say, I just don't like having a gas station here. Make it specific, again, the gas station does not meet the conditional use criteria related to traffic safety. Not saying that you guys did that with the sheets, I think you guys did a good job of pointing out those issues with the sheets on Stone Fish Creek. But I, you know, it can be easy to, you know, just let your personal decisions come into play in these. So just make sure it's always tied into the code. I would be very, I'd be more specific and trying to find something in that criteria. You know, rather than just saying there's, there's already two gas stations, because they can kind of make the argument that it fits better in with the surrounding area because there's more gas stations here, you know. But I think there's a lot more traffic concerns with that project and stormwater management and white lands, so. White lands, yeah. So I wouldn't just say just because there's already two gas stations, because it's, you know, there's that argument that it fits better because of that. So. I would also offer feedback, constructive feedback, even if you vote no, so that they, you know, even if it's denied, they could come back, change the plan to what you guys do want to see. So you could say, I vote no, but would reconsider if the applicant revised the plan to reduce building height and add more landscaping, you know. Before doing so, or even before making a condition of approval, I would have that discussion with the applicant, see if they're open to it. Because they could just say that's not feasible or that they won't do it. And then at that point, there's, there's no reason to make that condition. And then use findings of fact, you know, state objective facts that support the denial. So it could be as simple as site plan lacks adequate buffering from residential properties. You know, that ties right into the conditional use site plan criteria. And like Steve said, without voting, with voting no without clear documented reason, it can undermine the legal defensibility, create confusion for the applicants, lead to appeals or litigation, and can erode trust in commissions process, so.
And one thing I do want to say is, don't think that by us bringing this up, that voting no is some evil thing. I mean, if, I'm sure there are plenty of things that you guys are going to see that it's an obvious no. But as long as we can make that justifiable in the court of law, then voting no is a totally acceptable thing to do. So this isn't a push to say, yeah, just vote yes on everything so we don't get sued. I don't care if we get sued. I care if we have a good record with which to defend. You know, we get sued all the time, but as long as we have a record for it, it's fine.
We were voting no. Is that because everybody is now so sue happy?
I don't know why she would tell you that, because for anything that is an administrative appeal, it's going to, when it goes to the court, part of that requirement from our perspective is to file the record. And then if the court is looking at the record, they're going to want to see why a decision was made. And sure, I could go on the stand and try to justify it based on my understanding of your decision-making process. But if it is right there in the record, then I don't have to try and interpret something. I can say there were three no votes and two yes votes, and two of the no votes did it for this reason. One of the no votes did it for this reason. Here's why those positions are legally defensible. Here's why we should prevail in this administrative appeal. If I'm having to interpret what your guys' decision was, then I could say, well, it seems like they made the decision based on criteria D or criteria E, but without that being specifically mentioned, it's really my interpretation. And the court's going to want to look at what your actual decision was based off of, rather than what my argument is. So just like with other things that we have in court for administrative appeals, right now, we've got another one that's based off of a building condemnation. And during that BZA hearing, we made sure to get as much information on the record just in case they did file an administrative appeal to overturn the BZA's decision. They did file an administrative appeal, and fortunately, we have a very good record from which to have the court review that. And I feel confident that we're going to prevail in court because we do have that good record. Without it, it essentially becomes a my brief versus their brief argument. And especially with something like condemnation, court's going to say, eh, I don't want to take someone's house from them if you can't really justify why you did it. So it just makes everything cleaner, makes everything frankly easier for us. And it keeps you guys in a position where no one can say that you're just doing things because of, you know, random decisions or, you know, personal bias, you know, not to say that you guys are. But in that condemnation one, that's definitely argued a lot by the plaintiff filing for the appeal that we're all biased against them. Well, we can say, they can make that argument all they want, but this is the criteria with which the BZA made the decision on. So that personal argument, eh, it is what it is. We made it on real solid ground.
Steve, could you elaborate? If, say, one planning commission member votes no, they state the reason for traffic concerns, and everyone else generally, generally agrees with that, does everyone have to state why they're voting no?
I think if it's pretty clear that the decision is being made for that reason, I don't think everyone needs to specifically say, I am voting no because of X. But if there's any possibility that there is some kind of way to misunderstand why you're voting no, I would just say, I'm voting no for the same reason, I'm voting no for traffic reasons, whatever. Just to make sure that everyone's covered. Thank you.
Any other questions on voting or making motions? All right. And then questions to ask applicants. You know, when they, when the applicants come here and developers come here, you know, it falls into their court to kind of defend their application and explain why it's a good fit for the property and for the city. So I would always ask them questions on how it fits with the goals of the city. So I would always ask them questions on how it fits with the goals of the city and how it fits with the comprehensive plan. You know, have them evaluate any, evaluate any potential effects on neighboring properties or residents. See if they got any input from neighboring properties, you know, if it's a more contentious application. Ask if they've explored any alternatives to variances, anything that they can do to alleviate the variances that they need. And you know, just verify that they meet all the technical requirements and stormwater requirements and engineering, fire department requirements for the use that they're proposing. So some example, you know, just basic examples, are there any, are there any easements on the property? That's always something that comes up for, especially plazas and commercial plazas. There's always, all these weird property lines and shared access easements and agreements, which affects the parking and setback situation. So it's always good to clarify that with them. Do they anticipate any impacts on the schools or utilities? I'm sure their answer will probably always be no. But it's good to get them on the record also. Clarify if there will be any outdoor activities, why they think the use is appropriate for the location. Ask them if there's any conditions that they would accept to mitigate some of your concerns. You know, have that dialogue with them and clarify how stormwater is being handled. You know, that's always a common complaint that we get from residents, it's drainage and flooding and water. So have them state that on the record so it's clear, you know, how they're being, how they're addressing that issue. The final tips, yes? For where the amphitheater is going? No, there's, there's not a master plan for that development. There, there is an overall comprehensive plan, like the one that was, the one that was for the entire city, the one that was done in 2017. Yeah. So like through the, the criteria, it'll talk about being consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that's the plan from 2017, which is, that plan is very general. Most of the commercial areas are just designated as retail slash service, which is just commercial use. There's not really anything specific about the number of drive-throughs permitted in the area or, you know, parking, anything like that. It's just, this is where general commercial should be located in the city. That's basically all it really states. So just make sure that aligns with that plan. That's what the criteria is referencing. Now, the plan with the, with that plaza, you know, again, as it was, it was just site by site. You had the talk about going in that one property, the amphitheater going next to it. They were, they're handled separately because they're, we didn't work on them together, you know what I mean? So it's, it's important to review each plan just based on the property conditions that they're being proposed on.
I think that was all of our confusion because when most of us got on the bus ride and went down there, we were told, you know, they showed us a whole retail plaza and aesthetically it matched the amphitheater. So we were all told, this is all going to be one. So that's where I believe everyone on commission was coming from. We were told upgraded restaurants, upgraded retail, upgraded facade and really make that place look so much different. So I think that was our belief. So how, how, how do we incorporate that? We all said no for those reasons, I believe. So then how do we back that up? You know, you see what I'm saying? That becomes a difficult situation for us.
Right.
Because we, we were led down this path and now it's parcel, parcel, parcel. That's not, that wasn't any of our understanding at that time.
Yeah, I, I get the confusion. And I, with that project, we, there is a development agreement with the proprietors for the plaza itself, for the plaza buildings, not the outlots. The development agreement, the parking arrangement, that's with the plaza building. So that plaza building will be renovated, new facade. There's going to be requirements on the number of restaurants that, that they have to bring in and all these things. So that plan is still happening. You know, we're still getting the restaurants, upgraded facade, building, bike trail and all that. The, the talk about property is never part of the development agreement. It's always handled separately. They started that process before even started talking about the amphitheater.
All of our confusion because we were not under that impression. We thought that that whole area was going to change and be a part of this development. So, I mean, I'm, I can only speak for myself, but that was my understanding. So of course, I, I mean, you know, stove, car wash, Mexican. Now we're becoming a fast food town. I mean, that's what Stowe's becoming and that's what I think we're all trying to avoid as much as we can. We, we like to make it a little nicer and not always have another fast food place and another car wash and another Mexican restaurant.
There's another vacant property that they own within that. It's on the east side of the large plaza building. It's vacant. I think there used to be a grocery store there or retail building there. That's its own lot. It's vacant. So, you know, assuming it all goes well with this whole amphitheater and plaza redevelopment, we'll work with them to redevelop that too into something that fits, fits into the overall development of that. Yeah, kind of next to Wendy's. Yeah. No, it'll be between the existing two buildings. What's that? I think Sheets.
So the thing to remember is that it's okay to vote no for those reasons. You just have to go in depth on them. Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, some, something in the code, something, something from that list of criteria that's in your staff reports.
And these are so wide that you can fit just about any justification into these. It's just a matter of getting it on the record. That way it's taken care of. And even if down the road a court disagrees, at least we can say we did everything we could to follow our criteria and you guys as appointed commission members decided for these reasons.
Yeah, last thing, just future, you know, or final tips and resources. There's training out there. I think we've set all of you up with plan netizen training when you first, I think, I don't know the last time we did that.
It was a little, it was over a year ago.
It's very, yeah, it's thrilling.
I think so. Like, I feel like it was February.
Yeah.
Maybe. I'll have to look.
Yeah. Very exciting training. Yeah.
But if you ever want another, I can get a quote and get another year for you.
Yeah. And as always, we're here to help you. If you have any questions before, beforehand, you know, before a meeting, just call us. You can call Law Department. We'll be able to help you guys out. So that's all we got. Appreciate it. You guys are doing a good job. You got any more questions for us? All right.
No other business? Call for motions for adjournment?
I motion to adjourn.
I second.